To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Ram Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight we have two minutes to approve, council meeting June 15th, 2021, and council meeting July 6th, 2021.
Motion by Alderman Massey for both meetings, second by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Come up to the microphone.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sylvia Sanchez.
You take the mask off.
Okay, thank you. I reside in 1012 Spring Street. I have a fence, my concern, my fence, that I, it was built in 2001, I came for approval, that was approved, but my fence needs to be replaced. And the inspector went to my address and he told me that it has to come down to four feet. Right now, the back, the back of my house, he says, is an odd position because the way my house is built, I have some pictures and I had a paper that was approved, 2001.
Okay, the gentleman behind you, Mr. Twill, you can give him the pictures?
I'm sorry.
I promoted him. I promoted Gerard.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, he'll look at it, he'll let you know, just give him your number and everything.
Okay, the reason also is because I, I already, I didn't know, the inspector will say that, so to replace my fence, I, I got it, set out the appointment a few months back and it's already been painted, just to come and replace it. So that's why I think it's in this month, so I just want to make sure. But my fence is still standing, all broken up, that's the reason we're gonna replace it.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, and Jacob will take care of it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Vince Crescenzo, 30 Watkins Avenue, three things, the Fancher Davish Park, the pool and the, what's it, splash pad, I think it's called, that is the most amazing place in Middletown. We bring our four-year-old granddaughter there on Friday, she stays with us on Fridays, she has the best time there, it is so well-run, we feel so safe, the lifeguards are always on duty, nobody's, you know, nobody's, it's, it's great, and I have a lot of fun there, that's one. Number two, as a board of ed member, you probably know that we're going to do some improvements on the twin towers building, school building. It was built in 19, I got some notes here, but, built in, started in 1939, finished in 1941, it was a WPA project, it was built to house 780 students or so. Two years ago, we had up to 1,000 in there, and you understand what that problem is, just, just cafeteria alone, there were three or four lunch periods, the rooms are crowded, but the number one problem, well, there are a lot of problems, but a serious problem is the ventilation, and that was identified during the COVID crisis by state ed and the health department. So that's our number one priority, we're gonna redo the ventilation, we're gonna air-condition, that's the only building, school building in the district, that's not air-conditioned, that's number one. Over the past five, 10 years, we've done masonry restoration, enclosed the front entrance for a security station, hazardous material abatement, the asbestos is a problem in any building that size, but it's not a problem at this time, because whatever, wherever there is asbestos, it's abated. But when you remove carpet, the floor tile, you, you wanna put plumbing in the wall, you gotta, you know, fence off the whole, the whole area. So we're on top of that, and we're doing that. And then there's historic preservation, you notice the towers have been repaired, there was like a black stain running down the frieze at the top, and, and it's constant maintenance, the, the masonry is so porous that the water sucks in there, gets into the building, goes between the walls and everything, and all of that's being done. And then we're looking at, we're gonna look at drop-off alternatives for the kids, this is a joke, but if we could get the city's approval to do eminent domain, domain and tear down those houses on, on Grand Avenue, right. So anyway, I can't give you a lot of information because, not because I don't want to, it's just we don't have it. We, we have three plans that we're looking at, various costs and various degrees of improvement. But one of the things, some of the things we really are going to accomplish is instructional space for innovation and collaboration, as in all of our other buildings, especially the high school, next-gen core classroom learning environments, science, technology, and engineering labs, which really aren't there now, they're, they're too small, you can't do the robotics and what have you, it's, it's just too small. Enhanced fine art spaces, bilingual E, N, L, and world language spaces, you know, there are 14 different languages spoken in, in, in the district. Student support space, staff, professional development, and exterior play areas. Like I said, we have three different plans going, the only thing we've approved so far is the SEQA, and the district will be the lead agency for that. And the good news at this time, and I'm sure it will be at the end, is that, you know, due to the administration's extensive financial planning and the board's approvals, we have the money in the various fund balance and through grants and what have you, the air-conditioning is gonna come from the American Recovery Act. So at this time, and we believe this to be true, when this is finished, it won't be any additional cost to the taxpayers. And it'll be anywhere, depending on the plan we wanna do, it's gonna be anywhere from four to five years before you can actually go through the door. I mean, it's gonna take five, six months just for state ed to approve the plans, what have you. And the last thing, last Friday, in the afternoon, my wife was home, she heard three gunshots go off on Commonwealth, yeah, Commonwealth Avenue, and police response was intensive, state troopers, Middletown Police, what have you, we haven't heard a thing, we don't know what happened, we don't know, you know, if it's, if the problem's been resolved, it's disconcerting, you know, that's pretty serious, gunshots going off. We've had issues in the community before, and I got total respect for this police department, they handled it, we had, I don't wanna write adjective, we had a family across the street that really, really caused a tremendous amount of problems. They're gone. So, again, we don't know why we weren't informed about what happened, and if and when we will be, so, that's it, that's all I got, thank you so much. Let me sign my name here. Thanks.
Anyone else would like to address?
Good evening. I live in 50 Broad Street in Middletown, I live next door to a house that was taken down by an abatement company that the city had retained services from about, I'm gonna say, five years ago. The field that is left has been overgrown, DPW comes, I guess, on a schedule, and they do take care of the front part of the lawn and property, but the back of that field, which is the property of that house, which is now no longer standing, and that property is owned by the city, is a jungle. It is overgrown, there's all kinds of critters leaving, living in the back, one of them happened to take up residence in my porch overhead, there's opossum, raccoons, skunks that I've all seen coming out of there that have nested, and I have come to DPW before, I've requested that when they do show up, the crew to please go in the back and trim all of those trees, and, and they're overgrown on my fence, onto my property, I just never seem to get any real response to my, my issue.
Is the property 52 Broad?
Correct.
What number again? 52 Broad Street. There'll be someone there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Diane, I live on Grand Avenue, 125 Grand Avenue, I've been here for about 19 years, and I'm also a small business owner, my husband and I owned Jay Gatto and Sons' Carpet Cleaning and Floor Care, and we also do office, office cleaning, been in business for 38 years, my husband passed away last year, in 2020, so I inherited the business. I'm just here to say hello, I retired as an accountant in the end of last year, and I have some free time, I'd like to get involved in the city, I was involved very briefly, I live in Ward 1, which I'm sure everybody knows, I was involved in, there was a neighborhood watch at that time when I first moved in 19 years ago, and so I was involved with that a little bit, and I do some volunteer work for the warming station in Middletown in the wintertime. So I'd just like to say hello and, you know, say I'm available to, I'm also very, very interested in a pride committee, I understand there is a pride committee, and that pride committee is actually like a cleanup committee, which I also am very, very interested and excited about, because I'm one of those people that goes around and picks up garbage on the street and all that, my kids are always making fun of me, but that's about it, but I, I am also interested in a pride committee, LGBTQ committee, and see what we can, we can do and maybe see what kind of interest there is, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, remarks of all the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone, just a update on the 8-10 Mulberry Street, the, where the warming station is going to be moving to, there's bids out right now for the exterior work, the roofing, the siding, the sidewalk, and some other improvements, so that's moving along, the bids, I believe, are due August 17th. The interior is just about done, the kitchen is being finalized, and the warming station folks are gonna start moving their goods and their equipment and stuff next week with the help of DPW, I thank Jacob for his help to assist in that. Also, earlier this evening, we had a CDA meeting, Community Development Agency, and I reported on 21 Pine Street, one of our home rehabs and homeownership program, that's completed, and it's, we have an approved home buyer, so that's moving along, and we look forward to having someone in that home quite soon. And our concert started, the farm market is going pretty strong, so things are, you know, moving along, that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner.
Good afternoon, all. So, we'll start off with our reservoirs, for Alderman Massey, we're almost at capacity, it's, it's about 96%, so we're, we're in good shape, for this time of the year, very good shape. The other issue, I will start with the comments in here regarding the fence on Spring Street, we will look into it with code enforcement, 50 Broad Street, it's unfortunate because I just have not heard about it, I will look into it, I will speak to the lady who expressed her concerns and maybe find out who she talked to, and, and we'll get it taken care of. So hopefully, hopefully we can, we'll have some time to chat after, after the meeting. So regarding the garbage, the garbage and the process we're doing in sanitation, the process has been 100% really success beyond our expectations so far. We still need the cooperation of our residents by placing the carts away from mailboxes, please, and away from cars, parked cars, it's very important to do that, because otherwise it will become, you know, a time drag on our men, they have to leave the, they have to step out of the truck, move your cart away, then pick it up, dump it, and then put it down, and so on and so forth, so please help us out. Very few people are still not getting the message that you cannot leave any garbage outside the city-provided carts, or in separate containers in there, because they will not be picked up. We had a tremendous effort by code enforcement in there to go and greet people and let them know that, hey, you cannot do this, please take it away, put it inside the container, if the container is not large enough for you, then you have to request another container or another cart from DPW, but it has to be a city-issued cart. And many people, again, you know, majority of the people are responding, some people are still not getting the message for whatever reason, so the mayor, he's gonna be sending our standard two-page brochure and our water bill, basically, to remind people of what needs to be done and what, what the process is. Our code enforcement is still getting the list from our sanitation department and following through with it, so please help us out so that we can, we can, we can have a tremendous, tremendously successful operation and, and be an example for other communities around us. The drivers, again, like I said in the last meeting, they are thrilled with it, they are confident, they're gaining more and more confident every day and being more and more productive every day as they use these trucks. And again, it will cut down significantly in our workman's comp, will cut down in our men getting hurt, and it will be a much cleaner city. Another item, the paving operation, I wanna express my sincere regards and thanks to all the residents who have cooperated with us, and they endured this very aggressive paving program. This year, we've done paving, like I reported to you earlier, before, about five to six times as much as we do every year, that's a huge amount of paving in there, and, and we're very proud of it, and we're especially proud with all the people who came out, they put signs in front of their lawns, thank you very much for making our streets beautiful again, and putting donuts and coffee and water and ice for the men who worked through very, very tough and long hours, and I wanna really sincerely thank our residents for being cooperative. Again, we regret the rough roads that you had to endure with, the good news is tomorrow, we will conclude our paving for this year, so everything will be done this year, and after that, we'll start catching up with the remainder of our duties as DPW, including chasing other potholes and so on and so forth, but this year, I mean, really, about $3 million is gonna be dedicated towards the paving program, which is a huge amount for municipality of our size. And we thank the mayor, obviously, and the council for supporting us financially, and, especially our residents. Traffic operation, again, that's a huge project that's out for bid right now, just a reminder for the contractors, it's, when you add all the numbers together, together is around $26 million, that includes design and inspection and construction and so on, so it's a huge undertaking that's gonna be taking place over two years in the city of Middletown, and that is replacing the signalized intersections throughout the city. And promoting safer, safer walking for our pedestrians, and plugging all the voids in between the curbs and sidewalks and Dulson Avenue and throughout downtown and throughout the area. So we invite all the contractors to take out the plans and specs, the contract opening is gonna be delayed towards the end of August, the reason behind it is, when we started the design for this project about three years ago, we wanted to install camera system or visual imaging, imaging system in there rather than the buried loop within the asphalt. DOT did not approve it at the time, so we proceeded, now DOT came out and they are encouraging everybody to switch over from the buried loop within the pavement to, to the camera system or the imaging system. So now we're delaying the bid opening to issue an addendum so that we can incorporate the imaging system, which is basically nothing is buried in the concrete, less damage, less hassle, less maintenance, everything is above ground, and there is gonna be some cameras in there watching the traffic and the vehicles, and we'll adjust the timing accordingly and open up and close up roads accordingly, so we're very excited about that. Another big project we're working on is replacing water storage tanks, two of them in the city, they're very old, and they need immediate attention, and repainting another one, and we just got almost 99% approval from the DOH to, with the technical aspect of it, we have to sign a contract with Mount Carmel to purchase a property that is required to build Mountain Avenue Tank, because Mountain Avenue Tank is very essential, it's only one tank in the low-pressure system, so we need to purchase a site next to it so that we can build the new tank, then abandon the existing tank. So that's where we are right now with negotiation with Mount Carmel, they're very helpful, and hopefully we can sign the contract very soon, it's in the hands of Alex Smith, right now, our corporation council, under review, hopefully next meeting, will have a resolution for you to approve the mayor to sign the purchase of the property for the appraised value, and so that the project can move forward. Significant amount of funding for this project is grant from EFC, and some of it is low-interest loan. The water, water, the water main project for, from the water treatment plant down to Manhattan Avenue, we're having some issues with the pipe, and we're trying to work it out, I just wanna report to you the reason for the delay. Davish Park expansion, the, the council president is very interested in that, he keeps asking me about it all the time, and so is Alderman Johnson and Ram Cassoon, the work is really progressing, and right now, we're at a point where we're gonna have to start coordination between the electrical contractor and the GC so that the electrical will do the work, the electrical contractor, DPW will be doing the excavation and backfilling for the electrical contractor, this is how we structured the bid so that we can save some funding. And with that, I will conclude my remarks for this evening, any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. City Treasurer.
Hi, everybody. Well, I made it through my second day. I got to meet most of the department heads, met with all the finance staff, they're all lovely, Janet is coming back on Friday to kinda give me some guidance, which I thought was very nice, obviously, John's still here, he's wonderful, we're gearing up to get the preliminary budgets out for 2022 in the next couple of weeks to the department heads, hopefully getting a tour of the city tomorrow, and if you guys want anything different or any changes, please make sure you reach out to me, and we can do whatever you want.
Okay. Thank you, any questions for Kelly? Thank you. Police Chief.
Good evening, council. So the last couple of weeks have been a little busier for us than we've seen thus far this year, as you've heard from one of our constituents and from other communications, we've had some shots fired calls, we've actually, actually, actually also had a shooting this past Saturday night into Sunday morning on Dulson Avenue. So it's not fair that we don't wanna put out details, these are ongoing investigations that we have to be very cautious about what details we do put out at this time, not to jeopardize the investigation. I can ensure each and every one of you and every member of the community that the men and women of the police department are working diligently, putting in extremely long hours, using all types of technology, other resources, our partners and other law enforcement organizations to resolve these matters. I am happy to say that we did make an arrest in the Commonwealth situation from Friday, the individual was located and arrested, so that's a positive, but we still have a long way to go because there's still a lot more going on there. One thing that has come up again, and I've heard it multiple times, and I know I've said it here in the past, is we are hearing from the community that they don't wanna call us, they don't wanna bother us. We need the community to be participant in these situations, we need them to be willing to communicate with us, it can be done anonymously, via text, via nixle, via email, whatever it may be, but unfortunately, we can't be every single place, but there are eyes and ears in every neighborhood that, if we could all work together, we could definitely make a bigger impact on these situations. And I ask friends, family, parents, if you see or hear or know of something, whether it's your child or your neighbor or somebody that is going down the wrong path or dealing with people that they shouldn't be dealing with, or involved in stuff that they shouldn't be doing, please notify somebody. Find somebody that you trust, if it's not the police department, it's a, it's a council member, it's the mayor's office, someone, that we could get this information on the front end. I will say this, that a majority of the people we are looking at are in the teenage years or early twenties, and that's why I'm asking for the support of the parents and anyone else in the community. We've heard the adage of, it takes a village, and this is a, a great time to really show that it does take a village to resolve problems and to, you know, foster good relationships and try to move through these types of things. So I can't say it enough, I definitely would love more community support with trying to resolve these problems, and it's not just incidents such as these shootings, it's, it's so many other things, of quality of life issues, the ATV issues, so on and so forth, a lot of times, people in the community know who's involved, and there's just that reluctance to communicate with us. To help with some of the neighborhoods that have been impacted over the last couple of weeks, we've been having the officers go back out in those areas to give a sense of security, doing some walking, some more patrolling, looking for additional possible video or witnesses or whatnot, so I encourage the residents, if you do have questions, please engage one of those officers, and if nothing else, I'm always available, I can be reached, I take people's phone calls, I may not take your call right away, but I do get back to people, so if anybody ever has a question in regards to anything, please reach out to me. On another note, we've also seen an increase over the last several weeks in some car larcenies overnight, so I please encourage residents to lock their vehicles, their cars are not being broken into, they're actually looking and seeking out cars that are not locked, and valuables that are not secured, so please do yourself a favor and lock your belongings, lock your vehicles, do your due diligence, and again, if you see, hear, anything like that, please communicate with us, I know a lot of people have ring doorbell cameras, ring security cameras, if there's anything that pops up on those, please feel free to forward that to us, reach out to us, it could be the missing piece of a puzzle, and we definitely look forward to getting some feedback from the community. On a positive note, this past Friday, Officer Beebe concluded her second junior police academy, she graduated 11 students, they were the older group, that was the teenage group, and it was a great group, and again, Officer Beebe did an outstanding job, really working with the community, with the youth, engaging them, I come to the graduations, I see them, like, the bond that they build is absolutely amazing, so kudos to Officer Beebe, she does an amazing job with that. August 21st, the city has partnered with some of our local businesses to host a community barbecue at Davish Park, it's gonna be from 1:00 to 5:00, some of the businesses are Six West, Elite 845, and it matters 24/7. So it sounds like it's gonna be a great program, and we look forward to being a partner with them, to engage many people in the community. And that's all I have, unless people have questions for me.
Any question for Police Chief, Alderman Massey?
Chief, would you please just reinforce the fact that should someone call the police department and wanna report something that they've heard or they've seen, that they will remain anonymous? I had a call from a woman today that she wouldn't give me her name, she gave me a story that I thought should be, I said, please, please, when you hang up, call the police department, and her fear was that the person she was talking about would find out, and I said, no, I said, they, they will not notify, so if you'd just reinforce that.
Absolutely, and that kinda goes hand in hand with what I was saying, when people do call, the dispatchers are trained to get as much information as they can, so they are gonna ask for someone's name and information, it's not necessary, people can all the time say, I wanna be anonymous, and that's where it ends, but there are other avenues, as I was mentioning. But there are other avenues, as I was mentioning. If there's information that someone doesn't feel comfortable calling with, they could email, they could text, and we have a tip hotline off of our website that we receive those. The Nixle platform is a great platform for sending tips. We get them, we get them to our cell phones, so we get them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And typically, you know, they are answered except in the middle of the night in a reasonable amount of time. So yes, I encourage people, they do not have to give us their information. And I know there's a reluctance of being known, but we will do our very, very, very best not to let anybody know who is providing us the information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Francois?
Did anyone get hurt from the shootings?
Yes. So out of the ones over the last several weeks, the only people or only incident that ended in injury is the Dulson Avenue incident on this past Saturday night. What I can say at this point in it is that whatever started, started at Jay-Z Sports Bar in the Playtex Plaza off of Dulson, and then it extended out into the Dulson Avenue area. That is the only one over the last several weeks involving shootings that people were injured. Non-life threatening injuries, but nonetheless, two people are injured there.
Alderman Johnson?
I just was marking directly through Alderman Ram Cassoon because I was in a rubber bar in our ward and then it was the time of welcome. I'm going to board. I've been kind of beating the Nixle drum on the city's behalf and I've always, I've told people that it's too much information, but now you've given me the opportunity to think about getting information. It still is anonymous if I text you on my phone to you?
Yes, so there is an anonymous tip platform off of Nixle. We receive them, that's probably our number one source of receiving anonymous tips is through the Nixle platform.
And they could go on the website and get the information?
Yes. 888-777-MIDDLE-TOWN will sign people up. It is on our website, it's on the city's website. I know it's on the cards that many of the aldermen have been handing out. We're trying to push that information out, but it is a great platform. It's easy. Most everybody has a cell phone available to them, so it's an easy platform to push information up. That'll sign you up to Nixle. And then when you sign into the Nixle, there is actually a tip. Yes.
On a good note, we have two new officers?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Yes, we did just, the police commission did hire two new police officers last week, both bilingual. They began the police academy yesterday. Was an exciting experience for them, I'm sure, that first day of not knowing what they're getting into. But I'm very happy to have them with us and I expect, you know, great things from them. It's a great asset to have them as bilingual officers and I think that's going to be a great service to the community as well. So thank you to the commissioners, Commissioner Rodriguez, we appreciate that support.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Tonight on the agenda, there's a resolution to accept the LGS-1. This is a new report and it tells us how long we can keep our records and when we can shred them and get rid of them. It's something that the state has been working on for a year, I think, and it just came through. And we have to pass a resolution that we will be following this law. I did not attach it to your resolution because it's over 500 pages. So if anybody's interested, I can email it to you. But it replaces the MU1, which was long overdue for a overhaul. And that's all I have this evening.
Question for John? Thank you, John. Mark of Alderman, Alderman Burr.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Francois?
Yes, good evening. I want to thank the commissioner, kudo to DPW, especially the street department. These gentlemen have been doing a wonderful job this year and with the heat and the bad weather that's been going on, the streets look great, it's nice and smooth. I heard a lot of good stuff going on and this is, this is a great project. I'm very proud of that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to second that. The paving this year was excellent and it's just so nice to be on some of those streets that have been erect for a long time. So thank everyone in the department, they really did a great job. We will have our second ward constituents meeting on the third Monday this month. So that's, that's a change. John Numchuck's going to change it on the calendar because Andrew's not available for next Monday, so we want to, we don't want to go two months in a row with just me. So we will do it on August 16th and it'll be the same thing. It'll be 7:00 PM and it'll be, it'll be here in City Hall. And that way we also won't be, won't be right after, if it were next week, it would be right after the rescheduled public hearing on the opt-out local law and that, who knows how long that might go on. So hopefully people can turn out the third Monday. I was looking at my notes from last year on the second ward constituents meeting, speeding, reckless driving, quads and dirt bikes, safer walking lanes in Davish Park, Frank Shorter Way, the neighborhood watch meeting, stop signs on Commonwealth at J. Well, we did get that done. So the other issues are still issues. Tonight would have been night out, it is night out and maybe we'll bring that back next year, I don't know, but I would hope so. I think it was a worthwhile event. The post office has painted their parking lot. They've restripped it, they've actually got those one-way arrows finally after, after several years, so it's not a guessing game. People still pay no attention to them and people still park in the handicap spot, but yay, because they, they finally, finally did it. So that's a big help for people driving through that lot. Friday is August 6th, the 76th anniversary of Hiroshima. And Monday is August 9th, the 76th anniversary of Nakazaki. I just think it's something we should acknowledge and remember every year. We don't ever want to repeat it. And finally, you know, we had an old saying, it's been around for a long time, if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. And I just think that's a perfect saying for the people who refuse to get the vaccine and get vaccinated, putting everyone else at risk. So I was thinking about it and I thought, you're free to say no to the vaccine, you're free to make public health issues a political issue. But we are free to say you can't participate in public events if you are not vaccinated. With over 600,000 deaths and more every single day and the virus and COVID on the rise again, particularly in certain states, you're not free to risk other people's lives in spite of the politics of it. So what I've thought is that there, as well as a vaccination form, there should be a form where you sign a waiver and you say that you've been offered a free, safe and effective vaccine against COVID-19, that you refuse that vaccination and that vaccine, knowing the risks to yourself and others, and therefore, if you do contact COVID-19, you will not go to a hospital, you will not take up ICU space or use a ventilator or receive any special treatment, but you will stay home and not put others at risk. I know we can't do that for them, but boy, I sure would like to see it. Now we've got people saying masks don't work and, you know, and maybe the earth is really flat. I just, I, I don't, I don't get it, but you know, people are angry that we have a pandemic. What can you say? Thank you.
Alderman Ram Cassoon?
Good evening. I just want to start off by welcoming Kelly to the team here at City Hall. So it's nice to match your face with that beautiful resume and all your qualifications and excited for you to be a part of our city. Last Tuesday, we had our third ward meeting in the park, which I just wish we could do them there all year because the snacks work. See, I bake, people come, we've had people wander over trying to shelter themselves from the rain that rolled in and, what's going on? They got my card, they got the notes and, you know, I just like being out where people can see us and stop by and realize that, you know, Paul and I are very available and ready to go, but it was a nice meeting, it was fun to meet new people. So I hope, weather permitting, we can keep doing that into the fall. But it was a nice meeting. We've very happy residents here in the third ward with the paving and fresh new streets. And I know a lot of the third ward benefit from much needed paving this year. So my thanks to everyone involved in getting that done. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
I want to thank Alderman Ram Cassoon. I was not able to attend and she held the fort, I appreciate that. Paving is a big success. I talked to a gentleman who said, you know, this, my street hasn't been paved for 17 years. I said, well, it is now, so happy, happy day. We'll slayer field, keep it going. I kind of told people Labor Day of '21, but I don't think we're going to really make that deadline. But I also told on Labor Day of '20, so it's not really working out for me, but I'm trying. I want to congratulate Ms. Broody for CDA, it's a great program. I was just reviewing some of our stats in preparation for tonight's meeting. We started in 2014, we've done about a dozen homes and it's just a win-win for everybody. Vince is still here about the schools, so I was on the board from like, whatever, '86 to 2003. Back then, we debated the archaic nature of not having all the buildings air-conditioned. So here we are. Back then, we also started repointing Twin Towers and that scaffold has been there, I think since 1991, but we did make progress with COVID as far as the outside of the building. And I know you did a lot of work with the lockers and things in that building also. Along those lines, I took an opportunity to request Superintendent Del Maro and Principal Sorrentino, and I did get a tour the week of that meeting of the high school. And $12 million, no local funds. You would think you're in a college campus. They took what in my day was that grassy field and then it was the library and they expanded it to a feeding space or cafeteria, holds 360 kids, all Wi-Fi, plug it in, you can work while you're eating, everything's available. They put a college prep office off the cafeteria, so people are, kids are more willing to say, well, what's that over there? Oh, that's where kids go to talk about college. I think it's great. I got to walk through the media center and the clearly state-of-the-art TV studio, clearly state-of-the-art. I was also told they now have five houses instead of four to accommodate the growth of the high school. They have seven career-oriented academies, they're adding an eighth. As far as COVID goes, Alderman Kleiner, it's kind of like the weather report, you have to tune in every morning and see what's going to happen. There was an article in the paper from the Commission of Education kind of nudging the governor and public schools are trying to figure out, well, am I opening? Am I not opening? Is it social distancing? I can't have six feet if you want all the kids in the building together. So better, better Mr. Del Maro than myself. I'm taking, I've taken on a side project with the Rose Garden on West Main Street. Kate and I are aware of the fact that the people living there haven't been that happy about the way it's kind of degraded over the years. The Asian community owns that property and I'm still affiliated with Corner Cooperative Extension, so I have the Master Gardener Program is going to partner with Johnny Lee and they take on projects like that. It'll probably be a two-year project to see what they need and then move it forward. And lastly, I'm not quite as willing to delve into national cut topics as Alderman Kleiner, but obviously the January 6th investigation, if you call it that, is going on. It's kind of a circus at times, I guess. But I was troubled here this morning that four of those officers have committed suicide since that day. And they got up and they took a shower and they went to work and they thought they were going to protect the country and they had such an experience that they couldn't endure. I'm not asking for a moment of silence, but a moment of reflection. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yes, as Alderman Kleiner said, we are moving our meeting to the 16th, so that will be here at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. We don't always have home baked snacks, sorry to say. Nobody wants to experience my baking at least. I know Alderman Kleiner actually can be a pretty good baker, so you never know what we might have, but maybe we'll have entertainment, I don't know. Something to bring some people in, balloons outside. I did take a ride through the ward last evening and saw everyone's garbage cans out and it really does make a difference when you see the, the new ones out there and they're all uniform looking and very clean. And I have to say, pretty much 95% of places I saw were well within what we're, we're asking to do. You know, some, some of it, that bar should really be out in the street to make things a lot easier. You know, the handle shouldn't be facing the street. There's a little bar in the front of your garbage can that the truck really uses to make things easier. But I have heard great things from, from those working with the new trucks, so kudos to DPW and everyone who's doing that. It's a great program. And I also will just echo, please get vaccinated. I mean, you can't say it enough. You know, it goes, it doesn't go along party lines, it doesn't go along racial lines. This protects everyone and you. And there are many who still are under the age of 12 who can't get vaccinated, who could get very ill and even worse. So we don't want to think about that. Do your part, protect your community, protect yourselves. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
I can relate to the no air conditioning. I work in Washington as a teacher and our school's WPA project too. And especially these masks in those high days when it gets to the 90s and the kids have breathing conditions, it's really unbearable. There's really no public places these days that are air-conditioned except for schools. So, and my kids are lucky that they have air conditioning and I have to, I come home drenched in sweat. But, you know, I do actually want to talk about a national issue that's kind of creeped its way into local politics, especially school boards. And this is, I don't know if you heard about it, that it's kind of like a hysteria purported by the right wing and the Fox News, it's called CRT or Critical Race Theory. And it's, they're trying to scare people into thinking that people, there's this Marxist kind of theory that they're teaching in school and that they're going to save people from it. And the reality is that CRT is, is a theory that's taught in like law schools and criminology and sociology, departments in higher ed, masters and above, and it's about the intersection of race and law. It's not taught in schools. And so, you know, what is taught in schools is diversity, tolerance, equity, and those are things that we teach. And this is kind of like a dog whistle to the, you know, racists and the bigots that our schools are being taken over. And I know we had a local assemblyman just put out a, you know, a bill that's not going to go anywhere saying that, trying to outlaw CRT being taught in schools, which again, it's not taught in schools, it's taught higher and higher ed. So please don't fall for this mass hysteria about the CRT junk nonsense. It's not taught in our schools. We actually teach about tolerance and equity. And so just want to put that out there if you do hear about that. Pride event or committee, that's a great idea. I've attended a few in Warwick and I've seen members of our community there. I know New Paul's, Bucipsi have events, Walk Hill just had an event this year, so we'd be in good company doing that. And some more good news, the rail trail, there is now a connection to the other part of the rail trail and so now we can go all the way out, you know, past the bridge. I know I was disappointed the first time and I was like, oh yeah, I stopped and then we were blocked on 84, but it's a great trail, rollerblading, walking, running and biking. So if you haven't gone out there, it starts in Palmer Ave and heads out. And that's all for this evening.
Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to amend section 296-20 of the city housing code requiring a property owner to obtain criminal background report.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to adopt the LGS-1 containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to amend resolution number 152-21 on 7/20/2021 for new dates of Chief Alonju's contract.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to accept the bid for water pipe and gray iron
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alman Green to accept the bid for water pipe and gray iron castings.
Resolution sponsored by Alman Green, second by Alman Burr, any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alman Johnson to amend the city code to update the city parking ordinances.
Resolution sponsored by Alman Johnson, second by Alman Kleiner, any discussion? Alman Kleiner.
Yeah, this, this is mostly to finalize all the arrangements in the parking, in the parking lots, but what it does is it picks up verbatim the code the way it is and some of the streets are not there anymore or described as, you know, the street parking regulation ends at the Erie Railroad tracks or parking for Mulberry from West Main to Harding, doesn't go to Harding. So I, I'm asking that, that after we adopt this, that we take the section that we're